All right, since the flag will follow you, what's the flag from the first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So is if we can start voting for him while we're reading?
Yes.
Go ahead, Bill.
Thanks. Now during September, Village Board meeting, one of the subjects I raised was my concern about bleaker seats and the area around it. And then he has Lily Baseball Park section, that Smith Park, there are two bees which no one could sit in the bleaker seats, plus I was unable to correct his area. So I asked when will it be done to resolve this problem? The bleaker seat being filled with bees, so I found out that the public works got through those bees at the bleaker seat area. And I'd like to thank them for doing their job. Well done. And of course, I did report that to Manas Police Department. Now, in September also, while driving west on Exit Six, Ramp Austin, Interstate twenty seven highway, I observed one red vehicle parking on North Shoulder off Exit Six ramp in, which means that no one was in the red car and car did not have its flashlights on, so I reported that problems in Manas Police. Only to find out that from the police dispatcher, the reason that it was already been reported, the reason why it was broken down, because the car ran out of fuel. Now, the third one. Now during, again, in September, while walking on South Line Avenue, I observed one fire hydrant on West end of West Kemar Road being blocked by trash cans and other junk, so I reported this problem to the Manas Police Department. But three days later, they, I returned to South Line Avenue and I'm delighted that the trash cans and other junk had been removed from one fire hydrant. I wish Manas Police and Public Works guys will resolve the problem. And fourth one. Now, in September, while driving on Broadway here in Manas, I observed one metal street light marked with number sixty seven on east side of road not being light up during nighttime, so I reported this problem to the Manas Police Department. And so I found out a few weeks later that they, National Grid Utility Guys fixed metal street light number, market number sixty seven was fixed, and I wish to thank them for doing their job. And one of the issues recently discussed at Village Board meeting was New York's gold coverage grant, but by which I support because economic, this economic recovery world program provides economic welfare and budgetary benefits to nonprofit organizations, small lenders and small businesses, so I do support that. I also support restored New York program, now for several reasons and the quality of other people. So I'm encouraging community growth, well, localities. And the sixth one. I swept now while I was inspecting the two dugouts at Manas Lily Baseball during the kickoff season. So I saw a broken glass, which I was not too happy about, so I said, I better sweep up as much broken glass as I could, both in the dugout and outside the home dugout. So because I don't want to see anyone get fall down to broken glass again, so I will get cut scrapes and other injuries, and I didn't want to see that. So I swept it up. And I'm delighted to see that dugout replacement work in Manas Lily Baseball section, gas and Smith Park finally got done. Plus, I'm delighted with the new fencing around the baseball section, gas and Smith Park is done. I'd like to thank the contractors for doing a good job getting both project notes from Manas Lily Baseball organization done. Well done. And of course, I'd like to thank our public works guys for removing vines, weeds and brush from three signs on the west end of Upland Road, namely yellow dead end signs, green and white no trespassing sign from, you know, from ten o'clock until seven o'clock in the morning and lime, and plus one lime disease warning sign. Well done. Well, I did, did you give letters, copies, letter I wrote to Canadian Pacific Railroad officials?
I gave it to them.
I gave it to them Friday.
Yeah, I did.
All right. Well, I did wrote to them the second time around and I told them about the area and how the D N H railroad property on Gila Road, Manas Road, railroad crossing junction, meaning clean up work the second time around. I hope that Canadian Pacific Railroad Company does its duty to clean up that area. The railroad property on Gila Road and Manas Road, railroad crossing. That's a jump, the plants and brush and weeds need to be removed and the litter picked up and the drains need to be, well, I'm talking about the puddles need to be drained. And our public works, Village guys can't clean up that air because it's owned by the railroad's property, by the railroad company. So I'd like to thank you for, so I thank you for letting me speak on these important issues for me and other people. Thank you very much and have a good.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Did you also in your letter request that they bring the holiday train back for next year?
I didn't request it, no. I'm only worried about, I'm only worried about the cleanup property get cleaned up by the railroads.
We would love to have the holiday train back.
Well, I hope you have. Here you go.
All right, I have two things that I'm gonna go off topic here for. So yesterday, there was a structural fire in the village of Manas. And I'm sorry, I'm just confused. I'm getting a little emotional because you guys mean the world to me. I invited the members of the fire department who responded as well as the police who responded. It was, the call was incredible how quickly they got things under control. Manas Police, by understanding, arrived first with the fire department with thirteen members responding quickly afterwards. Other companies had followed suit and responded, but Manas, what I'm told, had it knocked down pretty much already, but by the time the other companies had gotten there. There was four dogs that were revived, were rescued. Unfortunately, four dogs and four cats did not survive. But I know the whole thing was very difficult for all of you guys and, oh my God, I'm sorry. We just can't thank you enough for all that you do for this village. You keep us safe, you respond on your own time with the volunteers and the police are here for us all the time. And without you, there wouldn't be us. So I just want to thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
I saw the, it looked, great work, guys. What else can you say? That's, you know, what you're here for and we appreciate it. Big thanks. It's very greatly appreciated.
Thank you all for, for putting your lives on the line every day so that we can live ours safely and happily. It's, it's difficult for me to say that. I can't even imagine putting my life on, on the line the way you guys do. And thank you for doing that for us. So it's easy to take for granted, but when you see things like, like this, it makes you take a step back and rethink that. So thank you.
The only question I have for Brian, you know, since you're so involved with the Hudson Community Society, will they donate more pet rescue masks or is that something that we would need to purchase?
I'll make it happen.
Okay. Because we used up a couple of, just to have them, wouldn't even be the worst idea to probably give them to like the police department, stuff like that.
Sure.
With them typically being the first ones there.
Sure. Done.
Thank you, guys.
I know it's just a public embarrassment, but we do appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone with these paper. Village person question.
I don't know why you did it.
All right, I'm also gonna jump down to number ten. As you may or may not know, our village gardener is going to retire at the end of this year. She's been working with the village since two thousand and six. We are very grateful to have her replacement with us here tonight, who I wanted to introduce to the board. She works at St. Ida Cemetery in various capacities, but also the gardener there, and she does incredible work. So we are so fortunate to have her. So Kelly Grimaldi, would you come up and meet the board?
I just want to plant the flowers.
Hi, Rusty Tim Lane. Rusty Brian Marsh. You have the mayor's parents. Very look forward to you starting on the beginning of the year and we're very grateful that you're looking forward to it as well.
Yes, I am.
It should be a good transition.
Yeah. So thanks.
You're welcome. I walk there all the time and it's beautiful.
Thank you. Yeah. A lot of work.
Yeah, well, that's for sure. I can't even get my grass to grow properly, so.
So your choice.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
If you want to stay, you don't have to, but I appreciate you coming in.
I have five dogs to go home to.
Enough said.
Wish you well on your job.
Thank you.
All right, very much that I can do. All right, I need to get, I don't know, I need the motion to approve the.
Well, is there any other name?
I just wanted to check on the status of the, I want to raise more.
We will have an update in like a few minutes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. I didn't see it on the agenda.
It's not.
Okay.
Just came up.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty two board meeting minutes. All favor?
Hi.
I have to say none.
Yep. Warrant number eleven, general, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Water, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. Sewer, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents. Totaling two hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Payroll number eleven, forty-three, correction, ninety-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents.
Ninety-three thousand, six hundred.
Eighty-seven, forty.
So moved.
All favor?
Hi.
We do have some transfers. From the contingency account, seventeen thousand dollars, going to fifteen hundred to court supplies, thousand for court miscellaneous, five thousand, five hundred to the auditors, unallocated insurance, four thousand, compensated vacancies, five thousand. And then from the lieutenant's account, one thousand to go to police miscellaneous equipment, one thousand from street part-time summer, four thousand, one hundred dollars to street pickup, one thousand, one hundred dollars. Train, three thousand dollars. Economic development personnel, economic development contractual, two thousand dollars. No dear transfers.
For the, the charger item, did Phil say why we were under by so much?
For the.
The auditor work?
They had to do more work than he anticipated and it was, it was just extra stuff that they had to do that.
And what was the cyber insurance increase?
It was, the cyber insurance went up more than what we had, he had put in for, four thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Post.
All right, Matt, you are up.
Here you go. You can go ahead.
There you go. Stand up, that's all right.
Everybody remembers Matt. He's still working on our.
Evening, everybody. This is Matt Rogers. I'm with LaBella Associates and we've been working with the village for the last year and a few months to update the village. So important. And today is the first rollout, kind of a stock rollout of draft law, which will be available to public review at the end of the week. So what I want to first do is to go through the kinds of process where we've been, for those of you that aren't aware of that, what the zoning law is, potentially why we're updating it and what the, what it's amazing amendments offers. So the project's being fully funded by Capital District Transportation Council through their community transportation and linkage program, grant program. As you may be aware, the village updated their capricious plan, twenty twenty-one. And one of the first steps is to update your zoning law after you update your capricious plan. So obviously, the first goal is to bring that zoning law into compliance with capricious plan. Plans generally provide specific recommendations and sometimes general policy recommendations on how to adjust the zoning. Some of the bigger elements is to integrate complete street standards, which I'll get into what that means in a few minutes. Revitalizing a handful of your underutilized parcels in the Broadway corridor. Promote and improve walkability. Obviously, you've seen a lot of changes over the last few years with introduction of bicycle lanes. We're looking to continue that and part of the way to do that is through private development, having them improve pedestrian connectivity throughout the village. Obviously, encouraging mixed use, compact, more efficient designs, hopefully bringing down the costs, providing more opportunities for housing. And ultimately, looking to create nice, easily understood and transparent zoning law. So zoning, essentially what this is, is it allows a community to regulate land use, both uses and density, bulk standards, et cetera, throughout the community, based on protecting public health, safety and general welfare of the community. And it's through enabling legislation that New York State gives each community the ability to provide zoning regulations. So this process was guided by two committees. One, a study advisory committee that includes members from, obviously, the village, but the Town of Colony, the Capital District Transportation Authority, Transportation Commission, Capital Region, District Regional Planning Commission and the Department of Transportation. So the reason why they're all involved, they all have different aspects of expertise that they provided the village throughout the zoning process. The real hard work was done by a smaller committee that included the mayor, trustee Marsh, Lyle, your co-forceman officer, Rema Shimia of C D T C, along with some of other C D T C staff and professionals and myself. The project did start with a previous employee of LaBella. They transitioned out and I came in in April of this year.
Actually, you're number three.
Number three, okay, sorry. So like I said, the project started last summer. There is a lot of public involvement, outreach efforts, survey, meeting with a variety of stakeholders, focus groups, developers, property owners, even staff bringing in kids to try to get them to understand what land use development is and how that impacts your daily lives. Monthly committee meetings, sometimes more than once a month. And beginning in March through October, we prepared multiple drafts that we've worked on with both the technical committee, the smaller committee and with the broader strategic action committee. So today, we have a draft law that we provided to the, to the village board. It's up to them to make sure that they're comfortable with it in a preliminary form to release it to the public at the end of the, end of the week. So the last time the village law was updated was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And similar to a lot of municipalities, the zoning law, you know, variety of sections get added in. Sometimes there's duplication, the definitions aren't revised. And in this case, you have multiple chapters with a village code that were part of zoning law. So obviously, one of the first things the village wanted to do is consolidate all those into one document and consolidate a lot of the schedules. The, the current law has several different, several different attachments that are located in different places in the village code. So not only, not only does the zoning board, village board and applicants need to go through kind of an outdated zoning law, they also need to be aware of where all the different sections are and how to interpret them. So that was a big part of trying to pull this together so it's a more workable, easily understood zoning law. So the, the main things we, we did in addition to consolidating everything is, is we integrated all the allowable uses and bulk standards. So what that means is, again, those were all in separate sections, so they brought them in the code. So if you have a project in a particular zoning district, you go right to that zoning district and it'll tell you everything that's allowed. Uses, density and all the other extra requirements are all in that spot, so you don't have to jump around to six or seven different attachments. We also revised the definitions, the, the use table as well was updated. So we had many meetings, Brian, Lyle, the mayor, along with C D T C going through all of your allowable uses, just kind of making sure. Over time, you know, uses change, new uses come up. You can never really anticipate all the different uses every year. So zoning laws are, are not a static document. They always have to be revised. But we took a big crack at it to try to bring kind of up to speed and clarify that each use that's identified we're comfortable with in different zoning districts. And so again, this is the first time this has been rolled out and I'm sure we'll have future discussions on different allowable uses. We updated the planned development district regulations specific to identifying districts where they're allowed and the minimum density and what a P D C is. It's a way in which a developer can go in and rezone their properties specific to their site, which is a legal way of what may heard of spot zoning sometimes. Involved in land use regulation. This is the way in which developers, if they have enough property, they can go in, rezone the property. It's up to the village board. It's a legislative decision. So we also clarified the village board authority. So if an applicant comes in and proposes to use that village board, it's just not in consistent with the property's plan. Then say thank you and send them on their way. If somebody comes in with a project they like, then they allow them to go through that process. So it's a way to allow for development in which we maybe can't think about right now in terms of density purposes. So it gives the landowners that flexibility. Also, as both zoning verification process, so this will be kind of a new process in which Lyle works with applicants and lets them know, okay, this is the project, these are the use which you have to get and the different permits that are necessary, et cetera. So let's provide the picture trail for the applicants as well as the village board going forward. So one of the big aspects of the current zoning law and what we're really focused on with form-based code districts. So what form-based code is, is essentially regulating development by how it looks. So this is actually a hybrid code, a true form-based code, doesn't even identify uses. Basically says, if you build, if your project is three stories, we'll say, and you're allowed X number of residential units. As long as you comply with the way we want it to look, where it sits in on the lot, then it can be approved. And that's a way to streamline reviews. Through this process, it was decided that a more of a hybrid approach would go over better, because it looks more comfortable that way. So you already had form-based requirements in your code. So what we did is we cleaned them up, refreshed the graphics, clarified a lot of inconsistencies. So the Broadway Business District, which is in two sections of your village, so it starts in the village southern boundary and ends at the railroad bridge, north end of Riverview Plaza. And then the northern part of the village, right on the village border. So those are your two village, or Broadway Business Districts. And we'll have the whole zoning map that everybody can see that that's interested will be online at our copies at the library. So within that, within this district, you're gonna have a two-story minimum. So every project has to be at least two stories. And the reason for that is, is where the village decides, decided to capricious planning process to create a consistent street wall and basically ensure that development is more efficient. So instead of just one-story commercial buildings, village wants to promote a more efficient use and get at least two stories. But through a lot of negotiation, we decided that, all right, so the second story, story doesn't have to be occupiable. It could be of what's called a full base go second story to provide that visual character that you need. Obviously, the village would prefer to have it be enough to occupyable, increases possibility for employment as well as the potential and increased real estate taxes as well. The four-story maximum is gonna be maintained where you're currently allowed, but we've decided that the fourth story will be stepped back a certain number of feet to that. We can't allow nobody to fill up the four stories, but having that fourth story step back a little bit will help kind of limit the amount of imposing tall buildings that, that might be in this corridor. So through the capricious planning process and through the outreach process earlier in this update, that's the direction that we're getting from, from the public as well as developers. Like maximize their development, but they also recognize that the character of the village cannot be, cannot change too significantly. So following these setback requirements are important. The base density, thirty residential units per acre. And if you're within a half mile of two bus rep and transit stations, then you're allowed to get density bonus of forty units per acre. So right now, there is not a base density in the village that's, and it's based on a project by project basis. So we looked at a lot of the recent approvals and the existing development patterns in these different districts and settled on these comfortable numbers, which are pretty consistent with what's been passed. Obviously, like any project, the land has to speak and it has to be able to support any type of density that's proposed along with the village services, water, sewer, police, fire, everything else has to be able to accommodate what's being developed. So this only sets the initial guidelines for that. So moving on quickly, the neighborhood district, what's called T four. Again, that's an existing district. Right now, that's centered around Wolf Road Ave. So it's a really tiny district. And it was, the emphasis of this was to really preserve that existing character and have it be a kind of a gateway out of North Albany and into North Albany. So those existing residential and mixed pattern continue. So we look, we actually expanded that district a little bit north of Amsterdam Ave to include the large parking area that's owned by W N, kind of like T, General thirteen. Obviously, the zoning here, we're not looking to, to move any development out, so to speak, but we recognize that long term, it makes sense that that, a couple of different additional parcels north of Amsterdam Avenue should be rezoned into this to promote future consistent development in that area. The density is twenty units per acre. It seems like a lot, but we've looked at all of the surrounding residential, both two, three and four family residential units there, and that is about the average density in that neighborhood. And then finally, the village center district, which we're in right now, which runs again, the railroad bridge, just at least on the east side of East Elm Road. So this area was originally designed to create a kind of village center as much as we possibly could within this village. The municipal buildings are center of this area. It's very walkable, easily accessible into the residential neighborhoods. There is a two-story minimum here. Second story would have to be usable. Again, a lot of infill development is what would be accommodated here. But also to protect the residential density on the west side of Broadway, there's a three-story minimum. You can't go above three stories to that character of the residential they put on the, on the, that's the west side. So the west side is three stories, east side is four stories. And again, a fourth, fourth step back to limit the imposing nature of a four-story building of one like this right now. The density is consistent with the Broadway Business District, thirty units per acre. And if you're within a half mile of the P R T station, you'll get that density bonus. and if you're within a half mile of a PRT station, you'll get that density bonus. For all of these Broadway quarter, form-based code districts, again, you have existing design standards, but again, those are spread throughout multiple attachments, multiple sections of your code. So we brought them all together into one section of the document. So again, an applicant, village board, zoning board, Lyle, can just go right to this section and find out all of the guidelines and the standards that you need to comply with. So the difference between standards is those are shall, so wherever it's stated in the code that you shall do this, they're required to do that unless they seek relief through the zoning board. Guidelines are strongly encouraged, and obviously, on a case-by-case basis, that it's a process between the applicant, village board, and Lyle to really clarify what's required in these situations. So address the street trees, landscaping, parking screening, pedestrian connections, and lighting, and a variety of other elements as well. But it's highly graphic, very easy to read, find out what the requirements are. So the complete street regulations that I mentioned earlier was a big part of this grant and a big push outside the village and CDT C to be fulcral. So essentially, what that means is anytime there's a project within the village, that project, if it's going to involve any type of new street openings or improvements to the streetscape, they need to refer to applicable street. So community commercial is Broadway. So you'll see on that graphic there that it's essentially, you know, four lanes, depends on where you are, obviously, within the village, so center turn lane, bicycle lane, sidewalks, street trees, lighting, et cetera. So the idea here is that as new projects are proposed, the applicants are referred to this section and expected to provide improvements if those particular improvements don't already exist. This will require close coordination with the Department of Transportation, particularly on Broadway, because they own Broadway, it's their right-of-way, and you need to balance traffic safety with design and best practice. So there will be situations where not everything, say, a community may want, or pedestrian advocate may want, will happen, but what we hope is that we lay out a predictable enough process in this code where if a development is proposed, the village will be able to reap the benefits of these requirements. So landscape design, street furniture, street trees, lighting, bicycle facilities are all laid out in this section in an easily understood format, and applicants, particularly developers, are pretty familiar with this. This is a new concept for that, just in a way in which now you can put this front center and put them on notice that that's what the village is going to be looking for. So automobile and bicycle parking, we went through and reduced significantly the parking requirements. You're probably pretty familiar with the amount of parking that is on both sides of Broadway, and it's not uncommon that zoning laws right now are exactly the same from one community to another, because over the years, they just copied them and pasted them without even considering, do you really need this much parking for a restaurant or retail use? So we slashed that in coordination with the village and provided minimums and maximums. So oftentimes, developer may ask for way more parking than they need, because perhaps it's for retail use, they want to have outdoor storage, or they just want to be able to provide as much parking as possible, even though that might not be required, that results in more impervious spaces than you may want, which has all kinds of groundwater and other adverse environmental implications. So we brought those down. There is a process, though, if a developer says, you know, you've got to be five more spaces, they can provide that documentation to the village board, and they come up with a pretty much on that. Bicycle parking requirements, so not to forget about the other modes of transportation, we decided that there'll be a minimum number of spaces, bicycle spaces, so a parking rack, one parking rack allows for the bikes. For each type of use that comes before the village board, they will be required to provide at least two spaces for each development. It's really going to depend on the size of the project, but we felt that it makes sense to require this. Again, there's a relief opportunity within every code if you feel like, oh, if you provide this, but we feel it's as important as we're looking to increase transportation choices that are not based on automobiles. And then a variety of supplemental regulations. So we've updated the village's home occupations, you currently allow them, but what we did is provide a little bit more guidance to the village board and Lyle in terms of what is considered a home occupation, how to deal with shoes such as parking and customers. The village opted in for adult-use cannabis retail dispensaries. The state is methodically issuing licenses and drafting regulations. There's terms of any distilleries, or distilleries, dispensaries, probably not till 2023, and in terms of the non-additional ones, licenses that'll be up for everybody probably later in 2023, plus. Communities that have opted in have to have some regulations on books. I'm working with the state as best I can to get as much information from them, but it's hard to get that out of them. They usually defer until they actually release the regulations. So they're in there, dispensaries will be allowed in the Broadway Business District and T4, or T5 rather. So that's up and down Broadway, both sides. There are separation distances that the state enacts, so no dispensary can be within five hundred feet of a school, and can't be within two hundred feet of a house of worship. Communities can set additional separation distances, we haven't gotten into that yet. State may come down with additional ones as well, they kind of hinted at that based on release last week with some guidance documents, so I'm trying to get clarification on that. Added in electric vehicle charging station requirements, so that provides guidance to Lyle and the village board in the same little solar energy system. So that vary from solar panels on your roof, residential, ground-mounted, to larger-scale utility solar, which those would only be allowed in your industrial districts. So I will say that zoning law, if large, most people could care less what's in zoning law, but obviously, if you're in the development sector, or if you're a village board, which is responsible for doing site plan specifications and some of those regulations, it's important to hold this into one solidified document. So if you look at your current zoning law, it's pretty small, even if you put everything else together, it's still somewhat small. This one is much larger, but it's full of visuals, photographs, and other graphics that will help everybody better understand the code and get through the process. So don't be kind of overburdened by the size of the document if you're interested in taking a look at that. So November 11th, the public draft will be officially released. It'll begin in 25-day public comment period, that's just the initial one. Draft will be available on the village website, and we'll have paper copy to the village hall and probably at the library at one point of each, will be there. In terms of if you want a hard copy, coordinate with the village, and we'll probably have some extra ones that might be available that you can take, but then I'll defer to the village and how you want to handle that if someone wants to get a hard copy. I like having a hard copy myself, but it is a pretty large document.
Because of the size, I'll give them a copy of, otherwise they're going to sit there all day long, well, for three or four days, reading it.
Yeah. It's good to hear from the staff, that's for sure.
Fairly interesting.
Yeah, I like it, yeah.
A hundred percent.
So what is going to be our process if we identify things that we'd like to get amended, et cetera?
Right, so again, it's a short period, and I'll just give a little backstory here. So we're backing up against the CDT C's grant contract, which expires here, so we're getting in this 25-day public comment period in coordination with CDT C that grant doesn't expire, the village gets the rest of the grant funds. And then after that, we will begin the formal town, village board process, which the draft that the village board approves to go out will go to the county, adjoining communities, and it starts the legal adoption process. But for this week, if you have, if you do go through that, and if you have anything that's of a concern, my email address is here, obviously, Brownby, Mayor, and Trustee Marsh, they're on the page. Once we get it out, so if this Friday comes and we're all set, and there's no major concerns or issues, it'll be released. And then again, comments can be provided to me, provided to the mayor, I know the website for the initial stages of this project, had a comment form, we can probably keep that in there as well. The more opportunities to provide comments, the better. On the 16th, the initial review ends, again, that's the initial comment period in coordination with CDT C, and that doesn't mean that if you think of something, you want to send it through, you won't be able to, of course, send us what you got whenever, because going forward, the formal adoption process will begin in January, first of the year, public hearing will be probably late January or February, with the February, early March adoption. So again, there's a lot in there, and to get to the entire thing would take several hours, which we don't have, and most people perhaps do that. So I'll pause there, see if there's any good recommendations for...
Just wanted to mention that general code, the board had previously, for getting the rest of the code, would update it. Because there's some areas of this that have been increased in other codes throughout the chapters, Matt and Todd have been put together and they're going to coordinate that effort, and then that'll be done before general code completes their part of the process.
Right. So questions? And if you can't think of anything right now, drop me an email, I'd be happy to help.
Matt, quick question. Zoning areas on the map that are not in the key? There's some that are not in the key.
What specifically?
A, with the circle.
Is that still on there? Okay, so we were just going to add that. Well, one of the things we're trying to do is consolidate and rename some of the zoning districts, because they all kind of have the same name. So...
Why wouldn't that be R1?
Well, that should be R6. R60. Yeah, that is the open space residential, sixty thousand square foot lot, so the original reference was A, so that's one change.
Well, then, are you taking input now, or do you just want to wait for something more?
Well, there are a couple high-level ones we can discuss, and I'll defer to the mayor.
Well, I'm looking at the BBD on the bottom of North Pearl Street, which be, you know, the one Broadway, and that's in the BBD, does that allow for the multi-unit dwellings?
Yeah, so in the Broadway Business District, yes, so multifamily?
Yes.
Yes.
And we were potentially going to have another project that's going to come in very nearby, which is going to be apartments, so that's an entry.
The entrance?
Yeah.
Sorry, BBD allows that?
Yes, yeah.
It does, okay.
Right, yes. And again, anytime a large project comes in like that, there will be coordination to ensure, you know, water and sewer capacity is available, traffic is addressed, et cetera. So that's in the back.
Anybody else have a question? Quick question. Those that are marked R, it looks like it's a light yellow, so you have Park Drive as well as Sage States, should that be R20?
So rural residential, I'm just looking at the color of some off here. So that's R20. So that is Sage States, yes.
And Park Drive?
Park Drive, yes, those are R20.
What would be the difference between the R60 and the R20?
R60 is sixty thousand square foot lots, so basically a half acres, and then R20 is twenty thousand square foot, et cetera. And the minimum lot sizes have not changed, they've all stayed the same in all the residential districts. And, you know, we've maintained terms of residential uses, all of the residential jurisdictions that we maintain, we didn't introduce or remove single-family, multifamily, those were the same. And that's what we heard during the outreach process.
So what's the purpose of having a difference between R1 and R20?
So that has to do with, so R1 is...
Sage Hill.
So it's a, could be a combination of different lot, minimum lot sizes and the allowable uses. So the R1 district is the minimum of eight thousand square foot lots, so much smaller Somewhat consistent, so a lot of these might have consistent uses, but they're all, as they were developed over time, you know, that one, that subdivision was built, that eight thousand square foot, others were built at ten thousand square foot. And then when the village adopted zoning, however that merged, that's where these minimum lot areas.
Correct.
And we did, we're only able to consolidate one of the districts, there was an R3A district on the north side of Clifford Road, which was one lot with two four flexes on it, and we were able to wrap that into the R4 district, the multifamily district.
Correct.
But weren't able to consolidate any others. And this, and in the grand scheme of things, you don't have, you know, what I would say is an unreasonable number of zoning districts. And the way that the village has built out basically means that these are your zoning districts without getting into change in density and uses, which, again, the public made clear that they wanted to preserve the residential districts pretty much as they So I can coordinate with the mayor and Trustee Marsh over the next couple of days, and essentially by Thursday, you know, any other events. So we got a cleanup, ready to go, and PDF will be decided, and then we'll deliver paper copies on Monday.
Correct.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much. I look forward to any questions you might have. Again, feel free to drop me a line.
Thanks, bud.
Carefully, but it looks very interesting, so I look forward to getting in, diving in.
I look forward to discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jen, so quickie on a hot tea. Got a few things here we're going to talk about. So we had a meeting at the reservoir the other day, so we'll give an update about that.
I'm Jen with Lobella Associates. So Lobella has been working closely with the village over the past several months to investigate the condition of the upper reservoir off their racier and try to identify the source of groundwater that's appearing at seventeen Sage Hill planes. So performed a series of inspections and investigations over the summer, did lead to one repair to try to dry up some of the water, did not seem to fully address the problem with the groundwater of the property. So since that time, we suspect that there is a leak in what we're calling compartment A. This is the front left compartment, as you can look to the right floor, at the seal between the wall and the floor, and we've been working with a vendor to identify the best... At the seal between the wall and the floor, and we've been working with a vendor to identify the best optimal repair method for that leak. In the hopes that this is blocking the pressure of the groundwater that we're seeing. Unfortunately, we've hit sort of a series of dead ends with that coordination and haven't been able to pull final cost estimates to make a, you know, hold them a decision on which would be the best method to go with. And so our vendor we're working with is is tied up in Florida right now with hurricane relief efforts and we just don't feel like we're getting answers in a time convention that we need to allow the village to move forward with some action here. So at this point, after meeting with the village last week, our recommendation is to put together a bid package for public bid. With, you know, what we identified with the preliminary preferred alternative for addressing that that leak and that putting that that bid package out. Street, we have a contractor on board to make that repair.
So in that regard, I guess we'd need approval from the board to go out to bid. Nobody has a question for Jen first, or if we want to?
So are we going out to bid just on this one leak at this one seam between the wall and the floor?
So our our recommendation would be to, the the primary purpose of the bid package would be to repair that seal which goes all the way around the compartment between the wall and floor. But while we are doing this work, we would also recommend replacing the control valves to each compartment of the tank, which is work that needs to be done. And also in a in a review of previous inspection reports of the tank, there were some other recommendations for security, good access to the tank and long term operation maintenance, and then those are major like signage, barbed wire on the fence, those sorts of recommendations. And so we would want to review those with the village and see which which those we might incorporate into the bid package all around there.
I was going to say, are, so are we fairly certain that in terms of imminent things, that's the only major leak?
Yes, you know, we've done inspections of all compartments of the tank and we've initially identified a suspected leak in the rear compartment and that has been repaired. And I don't believe that that's contributing any water anymore. The main compartment that we're talking about now, we confirmed with dye testing that there there does appear to be a leak there. And we've also done excavations in the front of the tank and can see that the movement of water passed the pipe in there, which suggested. So we have some evidence of significant leaks there and we have no evidence at this point supporting any anywhere else.
In terms of putting things out to bid, can, is it possible to, you know, to put it out to bid but have option A, option B, like the the valves, but then, as you said, the security. The other things for the maintenance of it, to have those as other options that the board can either, depending on, we have no idea how much it's going to cost right now. See, see where we are with those, like we.
Yep, we can always create a bid package with that alternance where we have our base bid and then.
I do the paper ash. Sure, I unless anyone else has a question?
All right, how are we going to word of motion?
I move to put the repairs and. The repairs and maintenance of the. The high service reservoir out to bid per the recommendation of Lobella Associates.
Got it?
Yeah.
Call it there.
Actually, who bid, who seconded?
Seth.
Okay, I can see it.
Right, so you'll work on that soon?
Yes, I'll put a plan together this week.
When would, so what do you foresee the the timeline being of the bid process?
Million dollar question.
Yeah.
So I I do think we would want survey to support this work, so we're looking at usually four weeks, we might be able to accelerate that for survey and then another four to six weeks for design. And then, you know, it's a three week period from there. That's, that's a very rough timeline.
Spring, it's spring for for the work, you think that?
It is, it is possible to do this work under cold weather conditions, which will be, you know, an added cost, we know that.
But, I mean, but all these things have have time, like, you know, this isn't, you got by Christmas, clearly, but I mean, each each part of the process has has time. So really, in theory. We would, we would be at the work stage by spring, though, right?
Probably, let me, I close, close to spring, I want to put some more careful numbers together before speaking of that, but.
Okay, but in in theory, you bump out with different things with a long six.
Yeah, we'll certainly be past December, January.
Doug, any, any questions?
No, I I initially, when I hear all this. I'm just thinking to myself, I know the reservoir, I believe, is approximately sixty to seventy years old. I believe, I have no idea, I'm just kind of gathering that from what I've heard bits and spits spats in here of kind of timeframe and age on it. I'm almost thinking that maybe while you're at it, maybe put together. The doomsday option of, after you see the cost of replacing the valves, everything else associated with it. Maybe what is the next step, is it a new tank? I don't know.
Well, I believe your predecessor mentioned, because I'd asked, is it, are we ready for a new tanks? New tank would be elevated tower, and that's how those are are done now.
That gets commonly what?
Yeah. I I don't even know if it's if it's worth looking into that at at this stage or see where we're at from there for comparison.
I would just do it for comparison, it's only time, right? You throw it out there, someone's going to give you a prize.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, right, I I agree, because I, again, I was asking the same question of Eric before, so, I mean, is that just something that then gets ordered and? Installed, if that were.
Yeah, I mean, like you're. Right off the bat, a brand new tank will be significantly more expensive than these repairs. From a design perspective, we'd have to think through phasing and spatial constraints, you have a reservoir there on a small property, we can't build a new tank right next to it. So we have to either find a new site for a tank or a complicated phasing plant. Keep water in the surface and available to the village while this work. It's not as simple.
Oh, I didn't know if it was something literally four legs that had built up in the air. You know, like if it were, that would be the tank.
Yeah, you know, the installation is relatively straightforward for the companies that that do this work, but it is. Splitting project that lets the site being and spatial.
Yeah, same, probably fortune just as much as the tank.
Yeah, sure, every.
You have to have the water running.
The whole time you're doing this.
Right, yeah. It's like building a bridge next to a bridge or under a bridge or over a bridge.
Yeah, I mean, just a thought, you know, just throw it out there.
All right, yeah, again, I I thought the same thing before, how much does a tank cost, it's, you know, four legs and a tank?
I just remember the diver guy, when I talked to him, I was up there one day, he's like, this thing's like sixty, seven years old, he goes, it's concrete, it's porous. He goes, water is going to go through it, even though they got the coating on it, he goes, it's eventually going to do something, it's old. He goes, it doesn't last forever, and it's a senior citizen at this point. Okay.
Well, certainly, you know, when you look at the useful life of things. You know. Again, you 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 do this for a living, are we approaching, what's, what's the useful lifespan of these things?
I can't give an answer to you right now, but I.
Okay, then it's, I mean, I guess that's what gets us us there.
All right.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah. Awesome. Just on that topic.
The sewer line camera and.
Sure, so village is interested in investigating the capacity. Third portion of the trunk sewer main, so it's conveying the wastewater from most of the northern end of the village down through your. A trunk line off Broadway and then down to the county interceptor, actually to the to the plant. We've done work for the village a few years ago on the southern portion of that trunk sewer, but have not overly investigated the capacity and condition of the water sewer line. So we have reached out, we're proposing a camera and metering project to both observe the existing condition of the pipe and see what capacity we have. So we've over the past couple of weeks, reached out to some contractors who do that work and got some some quotes to look at, I didn't break those numbers, so please don't tell them right right in front of me.
So so would we then look to approve that at the next meeting?
No, not tonight.
I don't know if I have. Do I have this? I don't know if I have. Where does this line run?
So it it runs along Broadway, basically down from from the northern end of the village down to the, basically the DPW garage.
Okay.
And then turns east down a, you know, a major outfall which is gathering the southern trunk sewer main and the northern sewer main need. Combined into a larger pipe and then head east towards the county plant.
So it was the southerly line and the the main going to the county facility that we that that we repaired and lined.
And I think it was twenty twenty seventeen.
Was it that recent?
A lining project on the southern, stopping at the point where those are together.
Okay.
So the effort now would be to investigate the northern trunk and the combined outfall line.
Okay.
So two different aspects of this project, one is the metering. The one quote she was able to get, that being.
Swallow and cheese.
Ten thousand five hundred eighty eight dollars. And then she got two quotes for the cameraing. The first one was for a hundred forty three thousand, the second one was for. Twenty six thousand.
KPI is a company that we use before, there's some work and we're satisfied, right?
That the lesser the two.
Yeah. Camera work, yeah, we use KPI, they actually were the contractors that did the lining work on the southern. I also had camera inspection components, and then they've done extensive camera work through the out端.
So they can actually anticipate getting this work done in the middle of December.
Both camera and metering?
Yeah. And so what we would be looking for tonight would be approval for the two separate things, the one company for. The metering and then the other company for. So one is the camera. PBI for twenty six thousand dollars. This falls underneath thirty five thousand DPW. Sorry. Okay, requirement to go out to bid, so it's under that amount, so we can go by the two quotes that you got. So there's a canyon, is that?
Yes, canyon pipeline.
Okay, yeah, so that's the one, and how did you say, what did you say the name was?
Uh, they go by KSP.
I'm sorry, what is it?
KSP.
And that one was for ten thousand five hundred eighty eight dollars. Oh, and Bill said, yes, there's definitely money in there.
Oh, we, we had to vote separately.
Which one you get?
Do the camera first, you can do camera.
Yeah, some of.
Call favor?
All right. And what was it, twenty four or twenty six?
Twenty six. I moved to approve the metering by, what's the company?
KSP.
KSP.
E.
PE. At ten thousand five hundred eighty eight dollars.
Second. Call favor? Close. Two more, Quinn. Again, I'm sitting around here, so at the last meeting, which I love to hear for, there was a discussion on the village speed limit of twenty five thousand per hour, it's on this. New initiative that the governor had put out, but what hadn't been discussed was the details of. Her initiative and what actually needed to be done. So the the Bella had been asked to look into the few things and then be back and like, no, that's. It needs to be certified by a licensed professional engineer who's specialized in traffic operations. It's not just as simple as the village board being able to approve reducing the speed limit, of course, like everything in state government, there's a process. Lobella offered a traffic study of the village streets and estimated the cost to be around twenty five thousand dollars. I had reached out to CDTC to see if there was any funding for that, and I was told, yes, there is. There is a grant application right now that's actually due the end of November. It would be a ten percent cash or in kind match for the village, so twenty five hundred dollars. And the deadline is November thirtieth, which is doable, and then the approval for that would be March second, and if successful, the funds will be available April first. So there's two options there for the village to either just just pay for that or allow to put in for that grant application.
If we, if we are not under the gun to put it in, I I very definitely want to pursue that.
We've been thirty foot high one. Better to. Do I have anything to add to what you're talking?
Can you just, can you identify what, so. What would the study entail?
So that from from reviewing with our traffic engineer, the the study is taking a few representative streets and doing traffic counts, type of analysis to support the changes people. And that we can extend that study to similar streets and that's like doing something.
Because I think, I mean, you know, looking, looking at. The most important street that I would think that this study would focus on is Wardline.
The Wardline has certainly had its complexity with the.
Right. But then technically it has to look at everything, right, all of the streets.
Right, that's the way the the initiative is is worded, is any changes.
So like what, what's, for instance, what they study in?
CHL.
In CHL.
So they they would do the same same thing, take a representative street and do that traffic count, traffic analysis.
Average speed currently, that's what I think.
They look at the width of the streets and. Other aspects of them.
And I'm not a traffic engineer myself, so I can't see everything.
The road's still at a thirty five, well, no, actually, I take that back, so if we bid, if we do this through the grant with CDTC. They would go out to bid for a consultant that would do this work, which may or may not end up being Lobella, just like the zoning thing we had as well.
I would like to see us try at least to apply for it.
Yes.
It doesn't hurt to do that.
All right, so I guess, is that a motion?
All right, second.
Call favor?
I didn't understand what you're, you're just.
Apply for the grant.
Apply for the grant.
Plus that plus of the engineering study that needs to be done for. But in the meantime, I think we need to get some thirty mile an hour signs on Wardline.
Okay.
And I'm thinking maybe even two in each direction, it's a long road and there's nothing there right now.
Could be where people enter, you know, from the top of the, yes, but also, I agree, definitely agree, but I think also coming off of with Scott Drive over there and Park. So they, so people know.
So I don't know who takes care of that. Anybody else, anything for Jen?
Should we also? Figure out what we need for the stop sites? Or are we going to wait on those, the the ones from the twenty seventeen local law?
What happened with spring?
But what, I guess I'm just worried what if. These things take longer or if you don't end up doing. these things take longer or if we don't end up doing this or we don't get the grant or any of these things, I just.
That works, already done.
Right, but I mean.
I can let him forward the.
Buying the signs.
I don't know if we know how many we needed for that study.
I don't have that.
That'll leave, need a little bit of looking at.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I have the, I have the local law right here if we need it, but uh that's.
Why don't you take a quick look and let us know? You could summarize it for us.
Sure, well, yeah, I just didn't know if there was like a net gain or loss, because there also, there's gonna be some removal, but mostly installation. Right, like copper roots on top of my. Thank you. Well, between this and that.
All right, anything else for Jen? All right, Jen and Matt, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
You too. Happy tomorrow.
Sorry about jumping around here, but um it looks like approval of the twenty-twenty-one audit.
Some vote.
Second.
Paul Baver?
Hi.
Close. Um, approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, both set programs.
Wait a minute, you have, we have to approve the the court one also. We have, I need one more for the court funds.
I move to approve the court audit for uh the year twenty-twenty-one, second.
Paul Baver?
Hi.
Close. Um, and we had this, what is this, uh, increase in the fee?
The, it's twenty, it's just, it's basically the same present as it was last year, it's twenty-six hundred, twenty-six thousand now, or twenty-six hundred dollars for them to administer it, but there is also a
Per per participant fee of nineteen dollars, payment certificate and trustee directive letter, seventy-five dollars per letter. Total estimate, two, thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yes.
We'll put this in the motion.
Some vote.
Second. Paul Baver?
I uh post.
This is the first year for the twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, yeah, that's, it starts January first and it'll be, but it's just, this is just to have them administer it?
Yeah, I got you.
Thank you, Paul. Oh, okay. Um, Ryan? You have something?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, I don't know if you know, we kind of created a uh uh partnership with Water Police and Gilderman Police and um they kind of started a, like a rapid response team for certain things, certain things that happen, you know, in all our municipalities. So we're kind of looking for, well, I'm looking for, um I had three guys that went through a an agility test to be on this team. You just can't be on the team, and they need equipment, specialized equipment. Uh, so it was Josh Coleman, Eric Sahajin, and Rob Stark. And Rob Stark, uh, while on the team, is also going to be a trainer. So he went through IDC school, which is instructor development school and firearm school. So he's gonna be doing all our firearms from now on. Um, the amount of equipment they need is ninety-four hundred dollars. Uh, I talked to Bill, he said there was money in the budget, my budget for it. So uh that's where I'm looking for approval.
What, uh, could you explain the the purpose of the program overall?
So, you know, it's, it's different, things that may come up if there's ever a hostage, a barricaded suspect, um warrants, high-risk warrants, but it's not just an arm municipality, it's in uh theirs as well, what if they, Gilderman? Um, if there's something at the mall, uh, because we've been called there three times already with them um for incidents that they've had, so um and these guys.
Like the fire department has?
Yeah, and these guys would also do a lot of our training, because they'd be at a higher, a more specialized training, so they can kind of bring that back to the rest of the.
Cool. Some vote. Second.
Paul Baver?
Hi.
Close. That's gonna give us more security, it's gonna give us just helping other municipalities and what's free, so. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Um, Tim, are we talking about the work thing or?
Yeah, uh, just briefly, um, I just wanna give you, I got, I printed copies of uh a couple of uh the permits that I was able to get my hands on. Okay, Gildan, um, Cohoes, Water Fleet and Green Island. And they, they're, you know, they look a lot different, but this, the function is similar. And if you're looking especially at the Cohoes and and the uh Gildan ones, uh, and the Water Fleet as well, uh, they're looking for the same thing, they're looking for, you know, uh, insurance, they're looking for, you know, uh, confirmation that uh the work is done properly, et cetera. And I think what we could do is, you know, especially in regards to the Water Fleet and to think Cohoes uh permits, I spoke to uh uh the 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 city planner for the city Cohoes, who was very helpful. And he says, because uh they've had situations where National Grid and others have come into digging streets where, you know, they just paved, you know, they just sort of done a paving job, and he said, National Grid, actually, they have a a liaison uh with National Grid. Now, I don't know if we have that. He mentioned a guy by the name of Joe Graves, but he said, they they have their work, if they're gonna be going in to to do infrastructure like gas lines and so on.
They, they wasn't National Grid, like, they did the south end, they gave us, they sent us a letter asking if we're gonna be doing any paving on these streets and if they're gonna be doing this, I forward that to.
Because, well, they usually schedule that three years ahead, is what he told me. So, you know, have, but to have somebody we could reach out to if we're, you know, have somebody that's gonna be, you know, doing some work, or even if we're gonna be doing some work. So I think it'll be helpful uh in the long run. I thought, you know, his insight was very good. So uh what I like to ask is that, you know, we look at, you know, the fees are not very different, you know, uh, uh, Cohoes is a hundred dollars fee plus three dollars per square foot of the dig. I think uh Cohoes is a hundred and fifty, and Gildan was in, Gildan was uh somewhat similar. Uh, they're not, you know, but the fee isn't the main thing, that it's just to ensure that municipality is notified. Uh, they they provided the UFPO number, et cetera. Uh, and uh, you know, then we can work out a process for, you know, if if the contract comes in and, you know, notifies, you know, the clerk or DPW, and, you know, we can have a form, we can have the setup for them to complete and, you know, like move ahead. Well, you know, just make it simple as possible. He, he said, it's not a, it's not a complex process, we just have, should have one in place. I was speaking to.
Are you able to coordinate all this and put it in terms of manas?
I I think I can, yeah, there, there, I mean, there, there's, they look different, but they have similar, you know, purposes. So what I'll try to do is I'll try to, you know, take, take some kind of format. I kind of like, I kind of like the Water Fleet one. So it's so simple, it's very straightforward, here's the fee and so on and so forth, but all the language, you know, of what they're requiring in a street exit, what they call it, they call it either a street opening permit or a road opening permit, as opposed to the utility permit that, you know, we were referring to before, and that seems to make more sense, it seems a little more.
We have LaBella, we're using these standards, let's see what that can be.
That's what, that's what I was gonna.
Well, I mean, we, I, you know, I actually had uh Bella look at it, and the only thing he saw from the, from the one that we had was that it was too complicated.
Yeah, once more, and he's a very comment with which cumbersome.
Yeah, it was, and and that, that, that's why your suggestion to go to the other municipalities was very good. And to be in line with similar process to what Water Fleet and Cohoes have especially.
And they're, they're right here, they're neighboring.
Right, you know, similar fee, similar format.
At the very least, we could have Steve take a look at it once you get it organized.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
My, my suggestion would, my suggestion would be Mike Hagman and Bob Dignam to weigh in on this, get LaBella's thoughts on it as well. I did look at what you sent out, Tim, and while Water Fleet is simple, I think it's also missing some things. I think there are some insurance issues that have to be addressed. Um, and I'd be interested in Mike Hagman's uh uh thoughts, since he'll basically be overseeing everything.
Okay.
All right, so after you're done putting together the draft.
Yeah.
See that's all those people we talk about, once you get their responses, we can bring it back to the board to approve it.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Well, that'll be good getting us in line and up to date.
Yeah. It'll be helpful.
Absolutely.
All right, so there's a couple matters for the executive session, that's personnel and uh legal, but whatever the anxiety that we're there is and everything.
I have two things. Um, the town of Colony Consolidated Annual Performance is available for viewing at the office. And um from Wednesday to Wednesday, I'm gonna be on vacation, so.
Did you get approval on that?
Yes, I I actually have six months ago.
No, I meant to report. Any motions? Your S L L.
All right, so. Oh, uh, real, real quick, um, Monday, December nineteenth at five o'clock PM will be the uh the menorah lighting at Anzer Smith Park, um, led by Kabod and Rabbi Mordecai Rubin. Uh, we do have a board meeting right after, so it will wrap up quickly enough so that we can be back here by, you know, five forty-five-ish.
December fourth is gonna be the tree lighting at the park.
Excellent.
What day of the week? Sunday?
Did you say December ninth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
December fourth is the tree lighting.
Yep.
You want to mention about the Halloween?
Oh, what?
Halloween.
How great it was?
Yes.
Um, yes, the Halloween event this year was a little bit different. Uh, we had the parade through the firehouse as we normally do, parade it up to the park. Um, the PBA had organized trunk or treat. Um, we've had eleven cars that participated. Um, had two counselors, thank you, Bill, and thank you to Ryan, um, who helped out. Um, that we guessed three to four hundred people showed up, which was way more than we anticipated, but it was really good and um.
Miss United States?
Oh, yeah, Miss United States came, she marched and was a parade and was like, oh, Jen, you're still here. We're talking about LaBella, and she's sitting right there. I don't know why I thought she left. Um, and I don't know, I thought it was a great event, got lucky, the weather was perfect. So, thank you to the PBA for all they did and the fire department for coordinating with the parade, so it all worked out well.
Bananas.
And bananas, our resident. Eight. So, all right.
Motion to go to the executive section. All right, it'll matter and.
Paul Baver, Diane seconded.
Hi.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
After we, I can, I have a question. Now. North of Vans and Lynn. I think with this T four.
On the other one.
Always a week.
Would I, is it more included or no?
I don't believe so.
And what kind of shape could we plan it in?